... School Committee. Before we begin, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, before we continue, just a couple of housekeeping matters. You might notice superintendent is unavailable this evening. Superintendent had something come up at the last minute that she had to attend to, so she's unavailable. Assistant Superintendent Sheehan likewise had something that she had to attend to, although we expect her arrival hopefully soon. Second, we are joined tonight by, for the first time, by three of our four student government representatives, so I want to recognize them before we begin. First, our senior representative back for her at least second year, is it your third year? For her third year, Audrey Erickson is our senior student government committee representative. Second, a new member, a new student government committee representative to the school committee, Junior Michael Sullivan. And third, again, a new student government committee representative, sophomore Grace Varela. All right, with that, the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and I have a couple of additions and one removal from the agenda. First...
Can I just ask, is Grace Varela any relation to Sheila Varela?
Watch out, watch out. Two Varelas on this committee.
It might be important to point that out now. We have two vote, two Varela votes.
Two female Varelas, Mr. Walker, watch out.
This has to be, this has to be a first in history.
Yeah, I think it is.
All right, all right. Well, we'll do our best in the face of that new voting block. So, moving ahead, on the agenda, we've had a couple of items come up since the agenda was posted, and I think is fair, they're fair to include. First, under the superintendent's report, we're going to add a new item B, and that's Park MCAS update and potential impact on the district. There's been a lot of happenings with Park and MCAS in the last week, in the last few days, so we'd like to get a just quick update on that. So that'll be item B under the superintendent's report, and happenings will be item C. And under the chair's report, we're going to, we're going to add as item A, five-year financial forecast requests from the town. We have had some requests from the town that we, we would like to deal with prior to our next meeting that have come up in the last few days, and so we'd like to add that to the agenda. So that will be item A under the chair's report, and the remaining items will cascade on down, be C and D. And then, under the finance subcommittee, we're going to remove item B, which is the first quarter report, and so item B will be the approval of vendor warrants. Does anyone have anything further on the agenda? Mara, did you get all that? All right, without objection, we'll approve the agenda for this evening, and we'll proceed first to citizen speak. And my understanding is that our sole citizen speak performers this evening are from the Milton High School cast of Forty Second Street, which will be, will be, will be performing soon. And the Forty Second Street, the Forty Second Street cast of the Milton High School performance of Forty Second Street will be performing for us, Lullaby of Broadway. So if the cast will come and join us and break a leg.
You guys come over by the table, like, up a little bit, in front of the whiteboard.
Boss, look around. Come on along and listen to a lullaby of Broadway.
I'd also like to announce to all of you and everyone at home, but the tickets were on sale today. You can buy tickets in the main office of Milton High School, as well as the main office at Pierce Middle School. And the dates of the show are November 5th, we will be performing at 7:00 at Milton High School, and as well as November 7th at 2:00 and 7:00 in Milton High School. So thank you all, and have a good rest of the night.
Thank you, Matt.
Good comment.
That was Matt McAuliffe, who's elected spokesman for the group. So, everybody get out and see Forty Second Street at the Milton High School. Mara, do we have anyone further for citizen speak? No? All right, we can move on to the superintendent's report, and that will be a combination of Assistant Superintendent Sheehan and Assistant Superintendent Pavlicek.
Thank you, Chairman. We have the enclosed and last meeting's report, the diversity report for your review, and I believe that we were just going to ask if there are any questions, any follow-up this week to that report, if any of the committee members had any questions for us.
I probably will next meeting.
So, yeah, so we can include, what we talked about after the presentation, which was quite elaborate, was that we would give the opportunity for members to come up at subsequent meetings, so this is one of them, and we can obviously do that in the future as well. Does anyone have any, any questions on the diversity, diversity report tonight that they'd like to follow up on? If not, we can, we can put that on, and we'll follow up at the next meeting, okay? All right, the next item on the agenda is the Park MCAS update, MCAS update and any potential impact on the district.
As many of you have heard in the last few days, there's been a lot of talk at Department of Elementary and Secondary Education about the future of MCAS versus Park. The commissioner has made several statements indicating there's not 100 percent behind Park so much anymore. They're talking about the possibility of a second round of MCAS, or an MCAS II, as they're calling it, an online MCAS-related exam. It's going to be an interesting discussion. There have been, the commissioner has said several things, the secretary has said other things, and basically, we're waiting for about two weeks till the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has their meeting to see how it's going to shake out. But at the moment, there's, you know, there's talk about, you know, the continuing the conversion to Park, there's talk about a Park-like MCAS to be developed, and it's very much up in the air right now. I think what you're seeing in my own mind is we've got the Secretary of Education, who is very much instrumental through the Pioneer Institute in developing MCAS, and you have the commissioner, who is very much instrumental in developing Park, sitting on the Park Board, and it will be an interesting discussion between the two of them as to how, how this shakes out. So I think that at the moment, we're all watching the reports from the today's meeting. I was getting some reports from various people saying, oh, the commissioner's now saying this, or, oh, the secretary is now saying that. So I think in, in two weeks, we, when they actually bring it to, or actually, it's three weeks now, I think, when they actually bring it up for a vote, we'll see how it shakes out. But at the moment, it's, it's a subject of debate. We'll leave it at that.
Can I have a question? Yeah. I was reading a lot about this, so I just, I mean, I know it's up for debate, and, you know, I don't know what concrete answer you can give, but it's a little dismaying to find, isn't, is it Chester?
Mitchell Chester.
Yeah, yeah, Mitchell Chester, who was instrumental, like you said, in forming Park, informing, is he the one?
He sits on, he sits on the Park Board.
The Park Board, and now to go against, to say, well, maybe we should do an MCAS, like, Part II, or whatever, that, that's, I don't know, disconcerting in a, in a big way, and very surprising that if somebody who plays an instrumental part in creating it now, and would be pushing it forward, now says, well, maybe we should do a mix, or back and forth. It seems to be kind of a shocking statement in the educational community, yes?
Good.
Yeah.
Well, I think that some of the information that's coming out in the news is based on some parent feedback and educator feedback that has gone to the Department of Education, and I think that that is why, why he is saying that we may be considering some kind of a combination of tests, and is noncommittal right now, because it appears that he is a supporter of the Park.
Yeah.
But I think it's coming from other directions, parent groups that are organizing and so forth.
I, just as a follow-up, I mean, again, I think that comes from, this has been the first year that a lot of towns, us included, that, you know, we wanted the take Park at such the extensive level that we did, and I understand, you know, even from the feedback from our own community, that they feel we're, you know, kids are overtested, and they're doing some Park, and they're doing some MCAS, but I think it's, you know, I think it's a bit of a shame to, to have to, like, revert back after all the work towns like us did to implement it, and not give it a chance to, you know, nothing's easy the first year, and to go running back because, because I think, you know, parents are over, I think parents, and I've said this many times before, are overwhelmed by it, and don't understand it enough, and, and then come up and put all the pressure on it. But to me, it seems like making such a big shift backwards after so much work to take a step forward, I feel might not be the best thing at this time, but, yeah.
Yes, Ms. Sheehan.
If I just may respond, it appears that, I don't think we'll be going back to the MCAS that we had, or we may, we may look at maybe just math and ELA, but it appears that there, that we will be moving forward in that. There has been a lot in the literature about the Park test being more aligned with the new frameworks. So I can't imagine that we'll be going back to what we did. I think there will still be something that looks different. I think the important thing to note is that we are prepared, no matter what test comes along, because we have put the, you know, the technology in place to take an online assessment, and I think that our teachers are that much further ahead, having prepared for both MCAS and Park.
Ms. Padear.
Yeah, I would say that in terms of the technology upgrades we made, I don't think they're, we're going to be going back to a pencil-paper exam, at least not, you know, they might extend the pencil-paper portion of it, but the technology upgrades we made, I think, are putting us in a great position. My main, main concern with going from one to the other, and then maybe something different, is when we look at data and analyzing data and how our district's moving forward, I think it makes all school districts, it's hard, because you're basically can't compare the data from year to year and year, and we've already, that's fine to do once, but it's now extended to two more years, and now, what's the third year going to look like? We still can't compare it, we started with something else. So I hope that they, whatever they come up with, they come up with something that can be implemented, so that we can start looking at data and compare it over the years again, and, you know, and the teachers can, too, the internal data for what they compare, and how do they improve, and how do they look at what we need. So that would be my major concern, not that, I don't think anything we've done to prepare for the new test is going to be wasted, but I just hope that they come up with something so we can start using, and the teachers can, and the administrators can start using that data again, as something useful, instead of just something we throw at the kids every year.
Dr. Donahue.
And at the, at the risk of piling on and moving slightly far from the field, I will point out that where the state has already changed the benchmarks for our economically disadvantaged students, we are already suffering the effects of the inability to compare groups from one year to the next, to the next, and I would urge the state, those of them who are watching and listening, to resolve this issue quickly.
Just in response to Ms. Varela's comments, one of the things being bandied about is the possibility of not doing the March assessment and the end-of-year assessment on some of these tests, which is in response to the notion that we are spending a lot of time testing children.
I have one final thing.
Yes.
And just as a comment for somebody who works for one of the major educational publishers in the country, I don't know any discipline that all of my, at our house, at any of our major competitors, that are not creating with Common Core. I mean, it's, it's the, it's aligning to the standards, I mean, the major, not that everyone uses all mainstream, you know, curriculum from places like HMH, or McMillan, or Pearson, but the major, the major national curriculums that are coming out and being produced are aligning themselves with the Common Core, too. So that's the core stuff that's being taught, so just another interesting perspective, yeah.
All right, well, thank you. Next item is happenings.
I think I drew that one.
Do you want to do the happenings?
Go right ahead. You do the happening for the athletics.
Oh, the athletics, do we do athletics next?
Go ahead and do the happening.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Zulus. We would like to thank all who contributed to the Science from Scientists Clothing and Electronics collection event last Saturday. Our elementary science curriculum coordinator, Bernadette Moonen, reported that it was a great success. We have a special thank you to Pauline Wells and Brandon Grimes, who played last Sunday at the First Parish Church concert. All proceeds will be donated to Milton Public Schools music program, so we thank them for that. Another thank you to all who volunteered their energy and time to yesterday's Milton High School Booster's Swing for Sports, October 20th, 2015. This event was also a great success. Tomorrow, October 22nd, author Alice Hoffman will be speaking at Milton High School at 4:00 PM, prior to her being the guest author at the Milton Library Gala tomorrow evening. Students and faculty are all looking forward to this event and to welcoming Ms. Hoffman to the Milton Public Schools. Just a few reminders of upcoming events. October 22nd is the Pierce Fall Fling Parent Fundraiser, and that's at Esther's. Next Sunday, all are looking forward to the Monster Dash, that's October 25th. On October 26th, at 7:30 PM, is the Fall Town Meeting. On October 29th, we have the Milton High School Grades Five through Eight Information Night. And as our very talented students just shared with us, on November 5th, Milton High School will present Forty Second Street at 7:00 PM. On November 7th, at 2:00 and 7:00 PM, there will be another presentation of Forty Second Street. The next school committee meeting is November 4th, and we would also like to note that on November 18th, the school committee meeting has been changed to Monday, November 23rd, at 7:00 PM. And Dr. Pavlicek will finish.
We also have a few athletic updates. I've been sitting at this table for 13 years, and I've never been able to say this, the varsity football team is enjoying a terrific season with a record of six wins and no losses, and they have a big game this Saturday at Wellesley High School, 3:00 PM, that'll determine the champion of the Hurgett Division. Our coach, Steve Dombowski, has been recognized by the New England Patriots. Andre Tippett was here to present them with the Coach of the Week, and the Wildcat team was on Channel 5 with a high-five segment last week. The girls' soccer season is off to a good start. They've already qualified for tournament play, they have several more games to play, and hope to have a home game for the tournament. In golf, the varsity team won the Bay State Conference Championship match last Wednesday at the Spring Valley Country Club in Sharon, and Captain Walker Stroud competed in the Division Two South Section Golf Tournament yesterday, and finished third, shooting a 74. He now is qualified to move on to Division Two State Finals next Monday. Our cheerleader team is hard at work, getting better at their routines. Courtney Scarborough and Kenzie Caputo were selected to the Bay State Conference All-Star Team. The boys' soccer team had a 1-0 victory over Weymouth last Thursday night, it came on the night that seniors and parents were honored, and they helped to qualify for tournament play with some more games coming up. Field hockey, the team is still competing well, and has a chance of qualifying for tournament play. They had a 1-0 victory over Notre Dame yesterday. The girls' volleyball team has a record of 10 wins and 5 losses at this point, they've already qualified for state tournament, hope to have a home match. The girls' cross-country team is having an outstanding season, they are 9-1 with a record of 5-0 in the Bay State Conference Hurgett Division. This is the girls' first team championship since 2009. And boys' cross-country has made vast improvements, their improved, their times have improved, and they're, have their last home meet tomorrow against Braintree. They look forward to a strong finish at the Bay State Conference meet on Saturday, October 31st. So they're your athletic highlights, and hopefully, at future meetings, we'll turn these over to our student members, like, they can give the athletic highlights.
And it didn't quite have the enthusiasm that we sometimes get from Mary Pigskin Glamour. I would point out, I thought the football game on Saturday was at 2:00, but your information may be better than mine, but anyone out there?
I thought it was at 2:00.
Yeah, anyone out there, maybe just double-check, because I, I thought it was 2:00, but we, you can, I'm sure you can double-check.
My understanding is we will have a fan bus going as well.
Okay, great. How, is there any way for people to find out about the fan bus, or is it just?
You can have it on the, on the, check the Milton Public Schools website.
On the website? Okay.
We'll get it up there.
And on the library gala tomorrow night, if you go to the Milton Public Library website, if you're still interested in going, I'm sure there are tickets available if you want to go to the library gala tomorrow night. Is there anything else that anybody, oh, Ms. Varela.
And for the Pierce Fall Fling, which is also tomorrow night, you can buy tickets at the door if at last minute you want to stop in and socialize and have a cocktail and some appetizers, so, yep.
Okay, all set? Oh, Ms. Padear. Oh.
Oh, and the library gala, the online auction is open, too. I don't know if you've been looking at that, there's a nice snow blower if you want to get, you know, get ready for the winter.
Haven't done that yet.
So the MFE organizers asked me to say a few words about the Monster Dash, because there's some updates. Number one, tomorrow, the online sign-ups end at 11:00 PM, so if you want to sign up online, they recommend that, well, you will have to sign up before 11:00 PM. They also recommend that you do the online sign-up if you want a t-shirt, because they have, only, the t-shirts only go to the first 500 entrants. Last year, I think they far exceeded that number, close to 1,000, so they're getting pretty close to that 500 number, so if you want a t-shirt, sign up online tomorrow before 11:00 PM, and you'll probably likely get one. Third, there is like a chance of rain right now in the forecast for Sunday, I'm sorry, the race is on Sunday, and, but right now, the race is going ahead as scheduled. If anything changes, they will either post on Facebook, there'll be an e-blast. If you're already registered, registrants will probably receive an email or a phone call, so just keep watching for those updates. But right now, the race is going on as planned. You might get a little wet, it'll still be a lot of fun there. Sunday, so just recapping, Saturday, they're also doing packet pickup as well as in-person registration from 2:00 to 4:00. Sunday is the race, registration starts at 9:00 AM, kids' activities start at 10:00 AM, the 5K is at 11:00 AM, and there'll be fun and awards after, including some fun awards for teams, and some creative awards as well, as the fastest runners. So I think that's the, the update on the Monster Dash. It's a lot of fun, come in your costume, plenty of people will be, I will be in costume. I don't know about Mr. Zulus, if he's going to come up with a costume for this year as well, but a lot of fun will be had. Yes, Mr.?
Mr. Walker.
The Milton Wellesley game's at 3:00.
It is at 3:00.
It is, okay.
Thank you. That's all, yeah?
All right. Anything else on happenings? Next on the agenda, thank you very much, Assistant Superintendents Sheehan and Pavlicek. Next, we have the chair's report. The first item under the chair's report is the item that we added on the five-year financial forecast request from the town. We have received an invitation from the town administrator, who has invited all, the chairs of boards and committees in town to attend a presentation of the financial, five-year financial forecast on Tuesday, November 3rd, at approximately 8:00 PM with the Council on Aging. So the invitation was to all the chairs, but anyone who's on the committee obviously can attend and has been, and is invited to attend. If you could let me know, maybe the Thursday, by the Thursday before the 3rd, because if we have a quorum, we might want to go ahead and post it as a meeting of our committee, if we have, if we have, if it looks like we're going to have four more of our committee attend. And in connection with that, the town has asked us, well, let me step back. This committee voted a financial, a five-year financial forecast to present to the town. We have been asked to present some alternative scenarios with different cost percentages and different one-time percentages, and we've been asked to do that prior to the meeting on Tuesday, November 3rd. Our next meeting is on Wednesday, November 4th, and so in order to have this accomplished, so we can get those alternative scenarios to the town prior to the presentation on the 3rd, it seems to me there are two ways to go. One is, we can delegate to the finance subcommittee, which we'll be meeting in the interim, delegate to them, the finance subcommittee, the review of those alternative scenarios, review and vote on those alternative scenarios, or we could, we could delegate it to the Assistant Superintendent for Business. Seems to me the better course is for finance to, to sign off on those, sign off on those alternative scenarios. So, maybe just to start the discussion, I will move to delegate to the finance subcommittee the creation of alternative scenarios for the financial, five-year financial forecast to, to present to the town.
Second.
Which has been made a second, and a discussion. Ms. Penile Jones.
Just a question, can you explain a little bit more what you mean about the scenarios? What would those look like?
So, so one of the scenarios, they've asked for a different percentage of costs. We had 1% of cost, and they've asked for a different percentage of cost, and the other scenario they've asked us to look at is the one-time costs that we've, that we have in, we had in prior budgets, and whether those would be rolling forward. So those are the two alternatives that we've been asked to look at.
Okay.
And it would be a matter of plugging in different numbers, basically.
So numbers or cut lists?
No, no cut list, no cut list. It's just, it's just, it's really just plugging in different numbers into a spreadsheet, basically. And then that will give a bottom-line number for us to provide to the town, and they can put it into their spreadsheet, and that will go towards the, the presentation on Tuesday the 3rd.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Walker.
I don't have anything on the proposed motion. But on the presentation of the five-year plan, it's not, we, as you might recall, we engaged in an accelerated schedule earlier this year to meet the selectmen's deadline that we produce a five-year forecast by February 1. And then sought to schedule a time to brief the selectman on how we developed that forecast. That meeting never happened. So if this meeting is that meeting, then I would suggest that either the chair or the chair of the finance subcommittee present the five-year forecast. This sounds like the town administrator, the town accountant, and our Assistant Superintendent for Business will be presenting the plan to us. I'd rather present our own financial forecast first, because we never got the opportunity to do that. We never talked about how, and we put a lot of work into it. And we developed a whole set of assumptions, and now we have a model that I think will serve us well. But I'd certainly like the opportunity to explain to the selectmen how we got to where we are.
So what we can do is, you know, clarify that with the town administrator. We'll clarify that with the town administrator between now and then. I know it's been presented to us as a presentation of the five-year financial forecast, but I'm sure it will be interactive. And the question is, you know, just how to plan that interactivity.
Yeah, good.
Ms. Daniels?
Can you repeat the motion or say?
I'll try. The motion is to delegate to the finance subcommittee the creation of alternative scenarios for the five-year financial forecast. That had been requested by the town administrator. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Now we move on to the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Resolutions. There is an annual conference held by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees at which, among the, oh, excuse me, among the many festivities that they have, I'm told, they actually consider substantive resolutions to pass. And our representative for the last couple of years has been Ms. Bedera. Ms. Bedera, I think she's our official representative. I think she's going to be accompanied by Ms. Rella this year. And so we have before us, for consideration, seven resolutions that comprise the report of the Resolutions Committee of the MASC. And so those are the resolutions that are going to be before us for our consideration to give some feedback to Ms. Bedera, as she will consider those resolutions on her behalf at the conference. And so I'll turn this over to Ms. Bedera for the consideration of the resolutions. And I think we should take these individually, so, and have a motion and discussion individually on each of the resolutions.
Yes, so it's time to vote on the resolutions. It's the most exciting part, time of the year in the school committee schedule. So there are several resolutions, as Mr. Zulus has said. I'm not going to read all of that. I'm sure that you've studied them in depth, but I'll just read the paragraph. Therefore, it should be resolved. So number one, and then basically, if you have any questions, or I can tell you, kind of, I did consult with administration a little bit on some of these, because it involved some of the administration's work that they've done already or are doing. So number one is resolution regarding high school starting times. Therefore, be resolved that MASC be authorized to petition the legislator and to support legislation, including S. 254, which calls for the establishment of a special commission to study the appropriate starting time for students in middle and high school. One of the things I thought was integral in this resolution is, at the end, it says identify resources and opportunities to assist districts in implementing later day, later school day start times for middle school and secondary schools. I certainly think that this is an interesting topic. We've done some studying on it before, but any resources that could help in recommendations of that sort would probably be helpful to us, and administration agreed with that. So I would recommend that we vote yes on this, but I'd be interested in any school committee, or school committee member's opinion.
So do you want to move that we, move that we support Resolution 1, just for the purpose?
I would move that we support Resolution, voting yes on Resolution 1.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Bagley-Jones.
I think it would be great if we supported this. I've never really understood why high school students start early and the younger kids start later. The issue when we looked at it before was that it impacts my sports. So unless it's across all of the towns that we belong to, we're not going to be able to do it. So it'll be interesting to see. But that would be my only concern. So I think it's a great idea to do it.
Ms. Rella.
So to follow up on Ms. Bagley-Jones, so, I mean, as a parent of a high schooler, I would be all for it, especially since so many of them are here till 6:00 o'clock most nights anyway. But, so if the big issue, though, is the after-school activities, especially sports, and it would have to be a statewide issue, would this be a good form to say, okay, well, bottom line is, everyone needs to start the sports later? Like, everything needs to be moved so that that can happen? Because if, but would that, would that basically mean, though, that most sports are played? I mean, do they start now? I ask the kids, what time do they start in the afternoon? 3:30, 4:00, or the sport?
It varies on the sport.
Typically, though? For an afternoon?
3:00, 3:15, 3:30.
But then there's also travel time for the away games. So it's really...
And so for away games, if you have 2:45, do you start at any time between 3:30 and 4:00?
Yeah, we usually...
Yeah. So would it hap, would the major issue be, would start time have to be 5:00, 5:00 to 6:00?
So this resolution is just to support the legislation. There's actually Senate legislation to establish a commission to look into all of this. So I think that's what we're, that's the vote here.
Right, okay. But just for feedback, Becky, if you're at this, that's the biggest thing that needs to be corrected.
Yeah, this is a vote, now remember, all these resolutions are just telling the organization that we belong to, that we want them to petition the legislation. So it's not even petitioning the legislation as much as it's telling our group, Masca, that we want them to push this on our behalf. And this is just a study, to study these early or later high school times. And perhaps out of that, support funding for supporting that practice. So it's kind of early in that, before, you know, asking start times and things. But as Ms. Bagley-Jones said, if more schools change, or were supported to change, then it would help schools that wanted to change, I think, is the bottom line.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Resolution 2.
So poverty in children, Resolution 2, submitted by the Framingham School Committee. Therefore, it be resolved, I'm sorry, therefore be it resolved, that the Massachusetts Association of School Committee will prioritize as a matter of its public policy agenda and file for and support legislation that will support the eradication of poverty among children in Massachusetts, and advocate for social and economic justice for students and their families. That will include support for a revenue stream that supports social and economic priorities for children and families, support for state programs and services that serve children at greatest social and emotional risk, which are easily accessible to students and families, advocacy for nutrition programs that eradicate hunger among children, advocacy for health care, including vision, hearing, and dental and mental health through accessibility service providers, support for pre-kindergarten programs for all children, advocacy for increasing educational opportunities for children to grow both inside and outside of school. I would move that we support a yes vote on this resolution.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
It's a lofty goal. It's a very good goal.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Resolution 3.
Resolution 3, tying test scores to Chapter 70 funding. Therefore, be it resolved that Masca support legislation to ensure that individual student MCAS and/or PARC assessment data in a given academic year is ascribed to the school and district that claims Massachusetts Chapter 70 funding, based on that student's October 1 enrollment, provided that the student is enrolled in a Massachusetts school when the tests are administered. Just a little background on this, because I did meet with administration. I think I'm going to move that we vote yes on this. Basically, what it will do is, students, when they move into the district, sometimes we're responsible for their scores and they've been in another district for a longer time than that. So this would change that somewhat, or we would be petitioning legislation to change that. So I would move that we vote yes on the school.
Second.
Resolution, sorry.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Walker?
Can you give me just a little more detail on what the problem is and what the solution is?
So I'm going to, because I did talk with Mr. Pavlicek a little bit about this, I'm going to turn this over to him, because he can describe the timing of it a little bit better than I can.
Chapter 70 funding is determined by the October 1st report. So wherever a student is on October 1st determines what district gets funded for that student in the following year. What can happen, and there are all sorts of timing issues here, is a student after October 1st will move into a different district and take MCAS or PARC. And the test score will be ascribed to one school, despite the fact they've only been there for a very short amount of time, possibly. But the funding for them is going to a different school. And so the idea here is to just sort of tie the two together. If you're going to get the money for it, you should take the test score as well, be it for good or for bad.
So can I, just for clarification, so the example is that if a student of ours, or if we have a student move in here in October 1, or, I started...
October 3rd.
October 3rd, I'm sorry. And then PARC is administered when usually, or whatever?
March.
March. So, or you're saying if they're on record as being, I'm confused about when they're our student and when they move, and how it gets accredited to us and not them. Give an, just an example.
Well, test scores are associated with the town in which you're enrolled at the moment you take them.
Okay.
Chapter 70 funding is associated with the city or town you are in on October 1st.
Ah, okay.
So they take a snapshot of all the communities on October 1st, which we're just in the process of filing now.
Yeah.
And that will be used to determine the partition of next year's Chapter 70 funds.
Dr. Danzeh.
So in, just for clarity, for those who may be listening now or in the future, so to my mind, there are three issues that come into play. The first is the sort of innocent example of the child who starts school in Milton, moves to Canton. And we get the funding and Canton gets the score. And it would be more appropriate if that were tied, one to the other. The second is the more sinister example alluded to in the documents here, where children are, students are encouraged to leave a district after a district has received money for their enrollment, so that their scores do not bring that district's collective score down, which would, this would serve to ameliorate. And the third is just a point to those who just look at the title, that this is not, this is not a recommendation for tying teacher pay to test scores, which if you just sort of read the title, you could come away with that impression. This is not, this is not that. So that's my three cents on the matter.
Thanks, everyone.
Mr. Walker?
So this seems like an imperfect solution. That is, we could be, if we're on the receiving end, it may be a good thing. On the other hand, if we have a student who we had from September to February, they then moved to another district, take the test in another district, then I'd argue that we should get the higher percentage of the Chapter 70 funding. So my question is, is this an all or nothing, or is there an opportunity to prorate the funding? Because I think, as it's presently proposed, I'm not sure I'm in favor. I see the problem, but I'm not sure that the fix is the best fix.
Mr. Zulus?
Yeah, Dr. Pavlicek.
I think what you'll find at the MASC meeting is, most of these resolutions never take the shape that they exactly appear in at this moment. There will be, there will be amendments from the floor, there will be changes and so forth on a good number of the resolutions. And I think the important thing probably here is to give Ms. Bedera the sense of how the committee feels about it, so she knows that when an amendment is made, she'll have some idea of the feeling of the committee. So if your suggestion is that tweaking would be in order, then I think you're making that suggestion.
My suggestion is, would be that there's the opportunity for proration where appropriate.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
Just a question, so it is October 1st. Where that kid is until October 1st, that's the town that gets the money?
Yes.
Right. So there's no now, nothing. It's all or nothing. So I think it would be a good idea to look at the prorating part of it, or at least equalize it if it can't be prorated. You get the good, you get the, you know, however that works. It would at least be somewhat equitable, maybe.
So we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Do we want to suggest a friendly amendment with respect to prorating the, or looking into a possible amendment on the floor to prorate the funding?
I'd be willing to offer that if you rule that it's in order.
Ms. Bedera.
So when we, you know, as I am signed to go to these things, a lot of times, as in last year, some of the resolutions changed and I basically voted the way I thought, the spirit of, you know, the way we wanted things to go. I think as we've clarified with Mr. Pavlicek, I can kind of go and vote any way I want, regardless of any recommendations, but I've always voted with the recommendation of the committee. But if there are amendments, other school committee members and delegates do make amendments or propose amendments on the floor. So certainly, if they're reasonable, there, you can make the suggestion of an amendment that I can make on the floor, and I'd be amenable to looking at that.
So I don't think it would be out of order, and I think it would be in order, to have a friendly amendment to support the resolution, and to explore the possibility of an amendment with respect to prorating the funding.
So I'd, I'd make it a little stronger. I'd say that we, I move that we support, here's the friendly amendment. The friendly amendment is that we support the amendment with a provision for proration of Chapter 70 funding where appropriate.
Do we need a second on that?
No, it's a friendly amendment. The question, no, no, well, I'm thinking whether I'm going to support that. I'm trying to decide, you know, the ins and outs of that. But the question is to Ms. Bedera whether she'll accept the friendly amendment.
I think I'd have to have something written as what to propose, because obviously, this goes a yes, it's like a yes or no vote, and you can propose amendments. So I'd have to have something written out and look at it in terms of proposing that on the floor. But I'm not sure, I think as written, from what we looked at, this was good as is. I don't know. I'm questioning it as well, just because I don't want it to get too complicated. This is really something that, again, we're just having Masca petition the legislation to look at this. And I would say that I would leave it as is for now, with the suggestion that we, I think there are a lot of things that are going to come up in the discussion in terms of how would this look? And that's down the road. This is just a proposal for Masca to petition the legislation to look at the way they're assigning Chapter 70 funding in a more fair and level way, I think, the way this is written. And I think I'm okay with that. We go into details for later, that's, they're, as we've said for the last, what, five years or so, they're analyzing Chapter 70 funding in detail, and I'm sure this will be... or so, they're analyzing chapter 70 funding in detail, and I'm sure this will become part of that as well. But I'm okay with the way it is. I don't know if other people feel strongly about changing or proposing amendment, I would look at it.
So it sounds like the friendly amendment is not accepted.
That's a very wordy one.
But in a very diplomatic way. So, any further discussion on the motion? We're back to the motion for the motion on the floor which has been made and seconded.
I think.
Oh, Ms. Padera.
Because Becky said earlier, you know, you can take the gist of what the feeling is. This whole thing raises a lot of questions and needs a lot of work being done on it. But I do like the idea of the prorated piece of it, if and when that gets worked out. So I'm okay with it not being amended, but you'll take that spirit with you of.
Yes, I will.
What Mr. Walker brought up.
All right. All those in favor? Opposed? Five, Mr. Walker, with a no vote. Resolution four.
Okay, resolution four. Support for an equitable and sustainable placement program for students covered under the McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Assistance Act. Therefore, it, sorry, therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees file for and support legislation that will design, implement, and fund a program that will provide a more sustainable and equitable placement program for the state's homeless and McKinney-Vento students. A placement program needs to include consideration of the social, emotional, and behavioral circumstances of the student, timing of the placement in relation to budgetary considerations, and proximity to the student's previously established support system, and the availability of resources the receiving district has to accommodate the student's needs. So I would move that we support this resolution with a yes vote. I think that, just as a little background, on what a student's homeless, the last school district that they attended is a school that they are supported to attend, and the school takes over that responsibility in terms of transportation and like. And I think this is looking into that. Sometimes a student is not living near the district, they're living outside of that, far outside of that, and like, this says their support structures elsewhere, and it seems to be a better program, or petitioning the legislation to look at a better program for supporting those students, and supporting the school districts that are supporting those students would be a good idea.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Pavlicek.
I have a question. Maybe I'm just a little confused by this. So is this saying that they would like us to support, if a child becomes homeless and moves to Milton? I don't understand how this is going to change, because right now, if a child becomes homeless, they're allowed to stay in their previous school district, right? And so, I mean, I know this, I'm just trying to think this through. So how does this change that? What is it going to do?
Well, it sounds to me, and maybe I, I'm not an expert in this, but I read the language, it sounds to me like they're trying to create a program to take a lot of other factors into consideration.
Yes, they're trying to take other considerations, and also where the best place for that student to be, if their support structure is elsewhere. And it's not going to not support the student that's homeless. I don't think, we're not petitioning the legislation to take away that support, those supports, but to look at other things and to better support them, and better support the districts.
So it's trying to get kids to stay in one school when there's multiple moves. So wherever the child is, the money allocated to that child goes with them. I assume that's the basis of the concerns about this?
Dr. Pavlicek?
The McKinney-Vento Act and homeless children fall into the same notion of chapter 70 as everyone else. They're, the district receives the money wherever the child is on October 1st. But children who are homeless have the ability to attend any school that they can reasonably get to, if they're.
And so how would that district be helped?
That district would not necessarily be helped.
And so would this resolution help them?
I think what this resolution is looking at is trying to explore a way to help them.
That's what I, thank you.
Because there is, you know.
That's what I was trying to.
In special education, if you move a child with a substantial out-of-district placement into a community mid-year, if this town hasn't had the ability to budget for it, the previous town still foots the bill for that year.
Right.
Until new budget community. There is no similar provision for McKinney-Vento or homeless children.
That's what I wanted, thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor? Unanimous. Resolution five.
Resolution five, tax reform ballot question. Therefore, be it resolved that the Masca explore ways to promote social and economic equity through a ballot initiative whose purpose may include a state constitutional amendment, tax reform, protection of the state's neatest residents of all ages, and seeks additional revenue only from tax reform affecting the state's wealthiest residents. Further, that the goal of such a ballot referendum would be to secure a stronger financial base to underwrite need improvements in the infrastructure of the Commonwealth, as well as the educational, social, and economic well-being of its residents. This was submitted by the Masca Board of Directors. I would move that we support a yes vote on this resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Walker.
I think this is well beyond the scope of the MAS C and poorly written as well. So I would suggest that we do not support this. For example, seeks additional revenue only from tax reform affecting the state's wealthiest residents. What does that mean?
I have to say, I agree with Mr. Walker on this, because I, because while the lofty goals are worthy, it is very open-ended about what this ballot initiative would be. And so, given that, I'm of the same mind as Mr. Walker. Dr. Pavlicek.
This was written and submitted to MAS C during the summer, and since then, the Raise Up Massachusetts ballot question has actually, is gathering signatures. So this is one of those ones, I think, that will probably be edited heavily on the floor of the MAS S annual meeting, and probably into an endorsement of the Raise Up Massachusetts petition drive, which is to create a graduated income tax in Massachusetts with a second bracket for people over a million dollars a year in income, with those funds dedicated to schools and transportation. That's the current ballot initiative. My guess is that's what this will be amended to be on the floor, because this was written before that was a reality, before that was being drafted. I think that's the reason for the confusion in the language of this, which is granted quite confusing, quite confusing.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? And all those opposed? And so it is 1-5 with Ms. Padera in support. Resolution six.
Resolution six. Membership of a school committee member on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, submitted by the Masca Board of Directors again. This is a little bit lengthy, so I'm not going to read all of it. I'm just going to read the first paragraph. Therefore, be it resolved that Masca submit to the General Court proposed legislation that MGL Chapter 15, Section 1E be revised. What they're basically adding at the end, it says, is one representative from a school committee from a list of three nominees, three nominees provided by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and five additional members. So from who, they have the list of who's already on these committee, and they want a school committee representative on that committee.
So the motion is.
I would move that we vote yes on this resolution, resolution six.
Second motion, any discussion? Apparently not. All those in favor? Unanimous. Resolution seven.
Resolution seven. Relative to the Teaching Strategies Gold Assessments for Kindergarten Students, submitted by the Arlington School Committee. Therefore, be it resolved that Masca urge the Department of Early Education and Care and the Department of Elementary-Secondary Education to end the mandate that districts implement TS Gold or any other externally developed kindergarten assessment. If anyone feels strongly, certainly they can give me their comments. I'm just waiting to confer once more with the administration on the TS Gold assessments that we currently use in our kindergartens, before I would advise a yes or no vote on this. So I guess what I'm saying is, and I should meet with them tomorrow, I'm saying if anybody feels strongly one way or the other, but I would move that you give me the decision after meeting with administration to vote either yes or no in the way that we feel is appropriate.
So it sounds like the motion is to delegate to Ms. Padera the discretion to vote on this resolution. Is that?
Yes.
I don't know that you don't have it anywhere.
I already have that, but, you know.
But, so, all right, so I don't know if that, if you want to make that motion, if you already have it.
You're always so technical on the wordy stuff, huh?
No, I don't, I don't, you might want to, you might want to make no motion at all unless, you might want to take no action at all, unless the committee, someone on the committee feels strongly.
Well, I guess if anybody has any comments on it at this time, they can talk about it, but otherwise, I would just say that I'm going to wait. I can't make a recommendation at this time until I confer with Superintendent, unless Assistant Superintendent Janice Sheen had additional information. But we were waiting on discussing this with our kindergarten teachers, I think, and administrators about the TS Gold program, because I don't know enough about it. Right?
Ms. Rell.
Yeah, I mean, I would like, I was going to ask even before the further discussion, if either, either of the assistant superintendents could, I'm not even familiar with the TS Gold.
Right.
Assessment, and then, but if we want to table that, and then if Ms. Padera speaks to the administration and then presents it to us of like, what, you know, what it is? Because I, again, I don't know enough about it.
Well, we vote, I'm going to be voting the night of your next school committee member so there, meetings, there won't be enough time to bring it back to you before I vote. So that's the only thing. So I guess I don't have a motion. It's just, that's what I intend on doing, and if anybody has any comments, they can make them if they know.
So here, oh, go ahead.
Well, then I was just wondering too, I don't know, just on a very broad stroke, if maybe Assistant Superintendent Sheen could just explain broadly, and if, what it is.
So the TS Gold Assessment System is a mandate from the Department of Education that is to be used in all kindergarten programs across the state. It is a, what we would call a developmental assessment, and it assesses all of the domains, all of the developmental domains in a child of kindergarten age. So it's the social, emotional, academic readiness, and it's very involved, there are multiple standards, and we have Ada Rosemeyer, who has been working with our kindergarten team for the last couple of years. The teachers have received a considerable amount of professional development around implementing this assessment tool, but what they have done is gradually implemented it. So they're not, they're not assessing all of the domains, just because it is very time-consuming, very much involved. So they're sort of doing a partial assessment, which is acceptable by DESI at this point. There is some controversy around it. Our kindergarten teachers have worked very hard at implementation, and we have tried to give them the time that is needed to maintain the assessment data. So I think it is certainly helpful in knowing the whole child. But I do think that we, I mean, we came up with a plan for implementation for this year that was manageable for the kindergarten teachers, but it was with the understanding that we would assess needs going forward, and evaluate the success of that tool with the kindergarten team.
So, Ms. Bagley Jones.
So am I understanding right, this is the first year that we've implemented it?
It's the second year.
It's the second year.
We're also using it in the preschool program as well.
Okay. So I saw, if I can just, I saw a couple of questions about it. It sounds like this is against the actual measurement, the TS Gold, it's saying we're uploading personal information, the parents say they're not getting any information, it's disruptive to the classroom. So is it that they're asking for it to be another? They don't like this one because of those reasons, and they want to get rid of it? Because the last line is, or any other externally developed kindergarten assessments. So is this resolution saying no kindergarten assessments? I don't care.
I don't think so.
Because it says, or any other externally developed kindergarten assessments.
I think, it's a list that they mean mandated assessments.
So mandated assessments. So you would assess, but you could choose your own.
That sounds like what the language says.
I can live with that. I think that would be good, actually.
Well, we don't have a motion on the floor. Let me suggest this, and see what everyone thinks. We do have finance committee meetings, meeting or meetings that are noticed prior to November 3rd. I don't want to overload the finance committee agenda. However, those are meetings that are noticed as full school committee meetings, and if we delegated it to the finance committee, or delegated to the finance committee and had the feedback from the administration at that time, it could be considered by either the finance subcommittee or by any member here who wants to show up at that meeting. But again, I don't want to overload, and I'll defer to our chair of the finance subcommittee. I don't want to overload that committee, but just, just in terms of timing, that's a thought.
I accept the delegation. If I might comment on the matter, this seems to be a pretty broad policy question, and I'm, I think we need a little more of a briefing on what the implications are. You could make the argument, either way, that a mandate that there be some assessments is probably a good thing. Maybe it shouldn't be TS Gold, but this says any other externally developed assessments. I don't think we want each school district to develop their own internal assessments and use just those. So this seems to be a much broader question. I think it's okay to send a delegate with a no vote on this one, but happy to discuss it at this week's finance subcommittee meeting, which, Ms. Bagley Jones, by the way, is eight, eight o'clock.
It is eight, okay, good.
On Monday morning. To me, we deserve a more complete briefing on what happens now, what the success or failure of that is, and what, what other options we might have.
Ms. Padera.
Just if it helps for clarification, I think we were leaning towards recommending a no vote on this, but we just hadn't finished collaborating with some of our kindergarten people to just make sure that we weren't missing something. So I think we're kind of leaning in that direction anyway, because, you know, I think we've had better success, but we have heard some ramifications and some information about this assessment program. But I would be fine with taking it up at finance if the three of us are here, and then we'll have a little more information to confirm that. But that's the way I think we were leaning anyways, after our first discussion on this assessment.
Is it likely or possible that we'll have more information by Monday morning? And then if the answer to that is no, is there another finance meeting before November 3rd? I don't know the answer to that.
There is another one Monday.
Yes.
There is.
November 2nd.
Okay, okay. So certainly, if not by Monday, by November 2nd, there should be additional information. I'll move to delegate to the finance subcommittee a vote on resolution seven of the Masca resolutions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right. Thank you, Ms. Padera. Next on the agenda, school committee goals. At the last meeting, I sought to assign responsibility to some of the members who had indicated interest in certain of the goals, and so we did that. We assigned responsibility to some. There was a desire expressed to have some more discussion on this, and so the floor is open. I will note that Mr. Walker has indicated an interest in being the responsible person for the strategy to, the fourth goal for 2015-16, which is develop a strategy to address the special education proficiency gap by June 2016. But with that, the floor is open. Ms. Bagley Jones.
I think my question to you had been more around a process issue when we've done subcommittees, you know, can we have some discussion? But then my other question is, when it says responsible committee person, it would be helpful, I think, to have an understanding. helpful, I think, to have an understanding of what that is. What does it mean to be responsible for this goal? Does it mean, what does it mean? You know, what's your timeline? You know, if it's a goal, how is it a SMART goal? You know, specifically, what is Mr. Walker going to do to develop the strategy around special education, for example? Or by when? I mean, how, how are we going to oversee these to make them happen?
Well, so, so the idea is some member or some committee is going to be responsible and accountable for accomplishing that goal. And to the extent that that individual or committee needs to bring in other resources or other members to try to accomplish, make sure that goal is accomplished, that member or committee can do so. So, it's really assigning responsibility and accountability so it doesn't get lost. So, because as a, as a group, it, it's, as a group, I don't think we, we follow these things week to week. But my idea is that it's nice to have, you know, as I mentioned last, last meeting, it's nice to have some accountable person or committee that would be responsible for following this thing through to make sure it happens. So, that's the idea. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a mandate to say, this is how you're going to do it. It's a mandate to say, here's our goal, we all talked about it, we all discussed it, now let's, you know, you be responsible for making sure it happens. That's the idea.
Mm-hmm. Can I just add to that?
Yeah, please.
Oh, and I totally get that. So, the action words are, you know, develop a plan, develop a plan, review and investigate. So, that's what the responsibility is. Like Sheila, you know, yours is around review, investigate new methods of effective communication. If it doesn't happen in terms of she investigates it, but it doesn't get off the ground, that's not her goal. That's not her responsibility. If she does what she's supposed to do in here.
Exactly.
That's it.
That's exactly right.
And then I guess I would look at, you know, reporting out or timelines around it, because I think you're absolutely right about following through on them. So, it might be good to just say, okay, mid-year, there's a check-in about where we're at or something. I don't know if you meant every meeting we were going to check in.
No, no, I, no, I don't think so. I, you know, I would, personally, obviously that's up to the others, but personally, I would, you know, I would go by the timelines that are in here and just say that person's responsible, and they'll, if they need to do a check-in, they can do a check-in. But, you know, if, if we want to change that, I suppose we could. But I, I would say that, you know, everyone here and every individual in the committee is responsible, and that they don't necessarily need for us to mandate that they have to do a check-in, but, you know, obviously, that's, that's just my view.
I don't mean to keep, but if, if nobody else has their hand up, I guess I think it would be really helpful for the rest of the committee and for the person doing this to check in halfway through, because then it's, that's your chance to weigh in on the issues, it's your chance to get questions answered. So, if we wait until June 2016, the school year's over. So, it would be good to have some kind of accountability in communication around it midway through whatever the deadline is.
Right, okay.
I'll, I'll second that. I mean, I think, I think it would be good to be able to report publicly mid-year on these, you know, these four main goals and/or the continuing ones, if they're continuing from 24, 2015, you know, I mean, if some of them end by, a lot of them end the year-end of this year, but, but at least for the 2015 slash 2016 ones, you know, I agree, and I think the town, the town as a whole tunes out by June, by June of 2016. So, it might be, you know, maybe starting after the new year, if each of the four goals at various meetings might have a, just an update or, you know, a brief update, like we do in subcommittee, of where we're at and what's going on.
I don't think, I don't think we need to formally do that. I mean, you know, we can put it on the agenda. We can put it on the agenda in January and February. I don't, I don't know that we need to formally say, well, you need to check in by this date, but, you know, that's just my view.
I think if people have updates, they should give updates, but I don't think putting in charge of people and goals is saying, okay, you better have this done by this, like, the accountability thing, I think, is just a matter of you interested in this, and would you be, you know, willing to take responsibility for this goal and do that? And if you have updates to give, I think at any point you can give updates, but it shouldn't be a, a thing where we kind of force that issue, especially with our meetings. There are going to be a lot being taken up in our meetings in the next couple of months. So, I would, I would say that if people have updates, they should give updates, and if people are interested in, you know, what those updates are, they can certainly request that we, you know, that you get an update or just wondering what's going on. But I don't think, I would agree with Mr. Zulz, I don't know if it needs to be formal, like at this date, we're going to get an update from every person or every subcommittee. I think it should be more informal, is the way I would think.
Ms. Bagley Jones.
You had your hand up. Mr. Walker.
Let me try to describe what I think we're signing up for here. The, and under our policies, the chair is responsible for coordinating the evaluation of the superintendent, and by default, the chair has been responsible for ensuring that the goals that are set by the school committee that are to be executed by the superintendent are successfully on track and hopefully accomplished. So, that's normally been a job that the chair has taken on. So, I think it's a good idea to disperse that and to say, so for these specific objectives, we'll have different committee members or subcommittees, school committee subcommittees that are responsible for overseeing the progress on the goal. We should be clear here that with the possible exception of space, a space plan, these are goals that the superintendent will have to develop a timeline, action plan, and will be responsible for achieving. So, I don't, I don't agree that in that case, school committee members should be reporting out, superintendent should be reporting out on progress against goals. We could decide how often we want that to happen. It could be quarterly, it could be semi-annually, we could wait until the end of the year. But what I think the chair has proposed, that's a good idea, is that someone should be tracking progress week to week. I mean, this, these are, these are goals for, and, and the other thing, and we talked about this a couple of times, so I'm not going to harp on this point, but the superintendent's evaluation cycle is now a two-year cycle. We're in the middle, so we're about to do a mid-cycle review. But we've now changed the equation a bit, and we voted to do that, but we've added four, four more goals to the superintendent's plate, or arguably three more goals in the middle of the cycle. So, I think it's a good thing that we're actually going to disperse responsibility for overseeing progress on the goal, but, but I think that's what it is. We're not, the, the school committee point person, except for the facility subcommittee, is not responsible for the achievement of the goal. They're simply there to work with the superintendent however they can to make sure that progress is proceeding with all due speed.
Anything, anything further? Is that, okay.
Let the lights go down a little bit here. Couple meetings ago, Ms. Bagley Jones asked for a Finance 101.
Sorry.
I promised to keep it short, it's only seven slides. Just to give an idea, as we enter the budget season, it's certainly not a bad thing to just talk a little bit about the overall structure of our budget and what we go through at this time of year, and just generally how the budget works. DESI requires us, requires all public schools to have a uniform standard for budgets. We have seven major categories, policy and administration, instructional leadership, instruction, instructional services, special education, technology, and facilities that we work through, and these are broken up into 50 as being kind, it's more than 50 minor categories, and then into monitor, we actually divide that into over 1,000 individual line items. Because when we talk, when we do our end-of-year report to the, to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they want to know not how many textbooks did you buy, but how many textbooks did each school buy? How many textbooks were bought for common purposes of all the schools? How many, and everything is broken down by school, everything is broken down by regular and special education, everything is, even facilities, you know? How many toilet, how much toilet paper was bought for each school? I mean, it's, it is an amazing disaggregation of data. A couple features, the, the school department budget, unlike any of the others in the town, is, is a bottom-line budget. This is a, a result of the Education Reform Act. Town meeting votes only the total appropriation to the town. The school committee by policy votes basically 14 line items, the salary and non-salary line items for each of the seven major categories. And the administration then divides those allocations among the, all the different line items underneath it, and we actually track it at the much more detailed level. Just a quick picture of what the trends have been over the last five years. The top line is regular education instruction. The second line in blue is special education instruction. And the lines that are flat at the bottom are pretty much everything else, administrations, instructional services, technology, facilities. The takeaway from that is the budget has gone up over the years, but it goes up in the instructional category, regular education, special education. You can, though, one little tweak in the lines, you can see in the, from 15 to 16, whereas the regular education line flattened out a little bit and the special education line kicked up a little bit, that reflects a slight shift in the number of teachers, a couple more into the special education category than into the regular education category. So, it's, it's not a surprising trend, you know, our money goes to instruction. In terms of the budget development, principals and coordinators identify priorities. The superintendent, assistant superintendents, and principals developed a draft budget proposal that goes to the school committee finance subcommittee, which analyzes and makes their recommendations to the full committee. School committee will, in beginning of December, vote an initial request to the warrant committee for a budget. We'll hold our legally mandated public hearing. The warrant committee will be aggregating all the different town budgets and putting together their proposal for town meeting. The school committee has traditionally presented their request at town meeting. And finally, town meeting votes, a final bottom line amount. As we've talked about a little this year, if, if part of that budget is contingent on the passage of a proposition, two and a half override, a referendum needs to be held, which could legally be done either before or after town meeting. It has to be done within 45 days of the end of town meeting, but it can be done beforehand. So, it could be done, for instance, on the April ballot if they wanted to do that. That's the general fund. We also have other funds. We have revolving funds, anything basically where there is a fee involved. Summer school, adult ed, facilities, rental community schools, the $8 we collect for a lost textbook is a revolving fund to purchase more textbooks. Pupil transportation, where the bus fees go to help fund the bus budget. Athletics, the athletic revolving fund is where the athletic fees go. Athletic team fundraising is a separate revolving fund, broken down by different teams, where each of their fundraising is held separately. Pierce has a sports fund, full-day kindergarten for the tuition, integrated preschool for their tuition, circuit breaker, which comes from the state, and roughly 25 other revolving funds. We have many for different purposes. We have grant funds. IDEA is the special education federal grant Title I. Limited English proficiency grant, teacher quality is a professional development grant. Special education program improvement is another grant, our full-day kindergarten grant, MCAS, other grants. So, in any given year, we have a varying number of grants, although there's six or seven standard federal grants that we will have from year to year. And one that we'll be dealing with, and just as a heads up, we'll be dealing with this year, is the Student Activity Agency account. This is when clubs do their own fundraising. This is an account unlike any other accounts. This is actually a checkbook held in the hands of the principal legally, where students who raise funds, funds for clubs deposit their money. Unlike the others, the, all the other ones are town money, student activity funds from the Student Activity Agency account are actually the property of the clubs that, that raise them. They are not town funds. And they're, they are, if the debate team raises money to go to a, an event out of state, and they do a car wash, or they do some fundraising, it goes into the Student Activity Agency account. It is not town funds, it is private money. It is subject to different regulations than public money. Bid laws don't apply, various different things don't apply. They have more freedom what, what they can do with it, but there are different kinds of oversight. I bring this up because the oversight rules have just changed, and we are going to be talking about this in upcoming meetings. We are going to have to drastically rewrite our student activity policy, student activity fund policy, because there is now going to be a required annual audit, and it can be internal, but at least every three years is going to be an outside audit of the student activity funds. They are actually, started them this year, and I have the audit guidelines, and they checked about 150 different things. And they're going to audit it for last year, when none of us knew what the requirements were. So, needless to say, none of these audits are turning out very good, because they're, they're finding many, many findings, because they're auditing, they're giving you a baseline for going forward. They're saying, what you did last year, these are the things that don't conform to what our new policies are. So, these are the things you're going to have to change. So, it's a very, it's a bizarre kind of an audit. It's not a financial audit, they don't, it's a completely procedural audit. So, we will be talking about this quite a bit this year, actually, because it's going to, it's a, it's a mandate that we're going to have to deal with. I was just at a three-hour course on it the other day. But that's a different, that's a very different kind of account. Tonight, you would have seen the quarterly report, but you're going to see it at the next school committee, but this is basically how the school committee can track the budget. I give you a summary of the seven major categories, I give you a summary of the 50 or so minor categories in the general fund. You get another sheet with colored columns on it that has not only that, but some, the, showing how the other funds from revolving funds and so forth come into play, both budget and expenditure. And then separate sheets on the revolving funds, the grant funds, and another special food service is a, a different kind of a revolving fund, authorized under different legislation. School committee revolving funds are different from town revolving funds, for those people who like to watch town meeting. At town meeting, of course, you have to re, annually reauthorize revolving funds and set spending limits. That's because they're set under a different chapter of the Mass General laws. School committee revolving funds under Chapter 71 and under food service, which is a different chapter, and under a few others. The facilities rentals also with Chapter 44 revolving fund do not require annual authorization and do not have spending limits on them in the same way that town revolving funds do. But this is quarterly, what you'll be getting from me in terms of breakdown of where we are to date. On the continuing spending authorization, spending is done through two methods. On the continuing spending authorization, spending is done through two methods, payroll warrant and vendor warrants, for obviously the salary and non-salary portions of the budget. Payroll warrants, those are just week-to-week payrolls, soon to be bi-week-to-bi-week payrolls. And the school committee designates one member to go to town hall weekly and sign the payroll warrant. Vendor warrants are what we're more familiar with. At these meetings, the business office prepares the warrant, we email out a summary of all the payments, that's the cover sheet, generally on Fridays before a meeting, so you can see what's being spent on what, at least in brief, you know, the vendor, who is being paid, and a short description of for what and how much, and from what account. The backup, of course, is this, you know, these lovely folders of all the actual bills that is available for the school committee review. And then for each warrant, at least four members have to sign the front, indicate that the purchasers are approved and the funds are available. And then it goes to the town accountant, who also validates it, and then finally to the town treasurer for payment.
Dr. Pavlicek, if I could just interject.
Sure.
That second-to-last bullet, the indicating that purchases are approved and funds are available, the suggestion that, that members are now indicating that funds are available is relatively new. We got a legal opinion from town council, I think it was two years ago, that said that not only are we approving the purchases and suggesting that these seem to be reasonable and connected to the right vendors and expenses, but also that we're confirming that funds are available in that line item. So that was a big change and one that gave us some pause.
I think there's also a question of whether it's available in the line item or in the aggregate.
Right.
That's, I don't think we got a solid word on that. But the town council did give an opinion that it was a statement that funds are available. And so that is the nutshell, that's the four-minute version of budget and spending. And it sorts, sets the stage for the quarterly reports, that you now, you have the first quarter report in your hand, finance will be looking at it initially, and then I expect it'll be on the next school committee agenda for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Pavlicek. Dr. John here.
I question by way of, point of clarification, can you, can you just confirm for me the, the order of events in terms of our Chapter 70 money? My understanding is, I believe that the state does the count on October 1st, and then our, our Chapter 70 funds are then made available essentially the following July, when the state budget is worked out. Is that correct?
Right, the chapter, the October 1st counts are used to, you know, basically apportion the pool.
Right.
That then won't be set until the budget is approved at some point in the spring or early summer. And the apportionment is done with, in consideration of the October 1st report.
And I, if I may, I bring that up now as it relates to our extensive previous conversations about full day K and the funding for that, how the, essentially the state, we're, we're getting paid a year in arrears, our, our state Chapter 70 money, which creates forward problems when we look to change revenue streams as it relates to full day K. So I'm sure we'll be talking about more of that later, but for everyone watching.
Ms. Verella.
So I have three quick, three quick questions. So on the other funds page, well, even, even before I go that, go to that, I just want to, Dr. John here reminded me to ask, with regard to Chapter 70, I'm just wondering, does that change yearly statewide about what, what constitutes like a family that would fall into the Chapter 70, does, like the income level change yearly of them assessing what that is to, I was just wondering that?
There, there are two parts to Chapter 70. The foundation budget takes into account only the students who are in your classrooms and, you know, whether they're regular ed or special ed, this or that. And it's an estimation of what it should cost to run your district, given the makeup of it. The second part of it is the towns, an estimation of the town's ability to pay, the, the expected local contribution. And that is based on things like the property values of the town, the median income of the town, and so forth. Those don't change annually. They tend to use census data on that, or data that's more sporadic, but the, the valuation of the town, there could be a partial reevaluation of the town, so some of that changes annually, but it's, it's not an annual recomputation of the whole town or of that part of it. And then Chapter 70 is just the difference between those two numbers.
Okay, all right, thanks for that. Okay. And then my other two questions are, with regards to the revolving fund accounts, so it looks to me as though all of the revolving fund accounts are extra, extra income that you all get or we all get from, yeah, from communities who rent out the facilities and, and then if you want to do the integrated preschool, you have to pay money, and the full day K, you have to pay money, and if you lose a textbook, you have to pay money, if you want to go to summer school, you have to pay money. So what I, what I'm wondering is, so does each, does each, does each thing have its own account? Like, does summer school have its own account, adult ed have its own account? Is there one massive revolving fund account?
No, they're, they're individual accounts.
So they're all individual?
They're what are called special revenue funds in the town, but they're all individual accounts. The town, town has several hundred accounts.
Right, right. So, and so in that, in that instance, there can't be any money, like, taken out of summer school to help pay for integrated preschool or full day K or anything like that? You only can pay for, you know, the money can only go to pay for that, you know, athletic team fundraising stuff, okay? I just, because I'm new, I just was wondering, no, I just, I didn't know, so, didn't know if it was one big giant revolving fund that you put it all into and, you know, okay, so that's good to know. And then my other question is, I was wondering how athletic team fundraising is different than student activity fundraising?
Athletic team fundraising looks very much like student activity fees and the student activity account, and in fact, can be done either way. So, so you can do athletic team fundraising as part of the Student Activity Agency Fund, or you can do it as a revolving fund. In fact, the, the existence of a Student Activity Agency Fund isn't mandated. You could do everything that that fund does through the, through a revolving fund. It's just when you do that, it's town money.
When you do which?
When you do it through a revolving fund, it is town money.
Got it.
So you have to follow bid laws and so forth and so on. When you do athletic fundraising, or any fundraising that is done by the students.
Yeah.
Not by the PTOs for the students.
Yeah.
Or by some other organization, but literally by the students for a club that's approved by the superintendent, and actually, what you'll find is now approved by the school committee is going to be a new part of the policy. Then that money actually belongs to the club, and the, the Student Activity Agency Fund is a private fund. So it can't, there is a choice on the school committee level as to which way to do things. And that's something we have to, that the school committee is going to have to make a decision on.
So this is what I don't understand. So if the girls volleyball team decides to do a fundraiser, okay, and it's in a revolving fund account, you say that it's a town account, where as opposed to if the girls volleyball team decides to do the fundraiser on the student activity account, that's their money and nobody can do it. But then you say, what I don't understand is that with the revolving funds account, if it's the girls, if it's the girls volleyball team, then nobody else can take it. Like, you're saying that it's town money, so explain the difference.
Here's the difference. The girls volleyball has a, has a giant fundraiser.
Right.
And it's to buy new uniforms.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that could happen either in the activity fund, activity club, or as a, as a revolving fund. If the girls volleyball team were to do a fundraiser and they wanted to do it for charity and give money to the American Heart Association, or the American Cancer Society, or something, you cannot do that through a revolving fund.
Got it.
The town cannot make a charitable donation.
Okay.
From town money. So they would have to do it through a student activity fund, where it's their money and they, as private funds, they can make a donation.
Right, right.
To a charitable foundation. And they, they can use that money for a variety of different purposes. And that's the reason why, under new policies, the school committee is going to have to approve of not only the Student Activity Agency Fund, but each individual club that has an account in it, what they're going to use it for and how they're going to raise the money annually.
Mr. Chair.
This is going to be a, quite a change from a school committee perspective. It's not going to be a huge change from a physical perspective within the schools. The people who run the accounts will run it basically the same way, but there will be a new level of oversight at the school committee level that has never really been there before.
Mr. Walker.
Could I suggest that we try to commit a more precise answer to this question to writing? I think it's an important question, and I'm not sure that everyone's clear on exactly what the differences are between the agency account and the athletic.
I have a 40-page document for Finance Subcommittee that you're going to get on Monday.
Yeah, I think there's going to be follow-up on the Student Activity Agency account, so we'll, we'll do that that way. Ms. Bagley-Jones.
Sheila asked one of my questions, and I just want to be clear, the athlete, oh, first of all, this was a great job, thank you. It's really helpful, and it's going to go on the web, I assume, and in the superintendency panel, I think that would be really good, timely. So the athletic fees are the gate receipts and the sports fees versus the athletic fundraising?
Correct.
Okay. And then the athletic budget is based on an estimate of what we think we'll get for the fees, the fees to pay sport and the gate receipts and something else, I forget.
Fundraiser.
Fundraising, right. Done by adults, well, anyway. So that's the athletic versus the athletic team fundraising, so I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
And then the third one is the boosters, which is not part of us, and people mix those three things up all the time.
Yeah, they do.
The boosters are a separate 501(c)(3) nonprofit, as the PTOs are. They have nothing to do with us in the sense of financial, we have no financial oversight over them. They are their own entity with respect to IRS rules, they have their own filings that they do and their own requirements that are completely separate from us.
Could I, can I keep going?
Yeah, please.
Can I suggest that there be a little footnote somewhere that says that about the PTOs and the boosters? Because people, so does that include fame as well?
It does.
Okay, so, because people mix those up, and I think they get, there are questions asked about that, so I think that would be really helpful. And then my other question was, when you say the 25 other revolving funds, as we go forward, if we can just keep the list of the other 25.
Oh, you get, they get them in the quarterly report.
Right, no, I mean, like, when you're, when you're doing this kind of a presentation, like, when this goes on the web, people, well, this is missing, this is missing, so it just helps keep.
We can put a link to the last quarterly report, and they can see them all.
You could, as long as you just say, a list of all revolving funds are listed on whatever, and then the, Mr. Walker's point about on the last page indicating that the purchaser are approved and that funds are available, I guess I have wondered about some people's concerns about signing the warrant, and now I'm looking at this going, hmm, yeah, I'm signing that and saying the funds are there for that thing. So I guess I would like to, even though I have the utmost respect and faith in Glenn, I would like to sort of have some discussion at a later point about how, when we sign and we're saying, we know the funds are available for that, it's a little bit concerning.
Well, that led to a change in the cover page that, that now gives us that information from Glenn. So we do get that information in the cover page to the warrants, and that was, that was really what led to the change, and, yeah, so, and so that, so we now have that.
Okay.
You haven't gotten the last couple warrants, because it's the beginning of the year.
Oh, okay.
No, it has not been, we just.
I was going to say, wow, I missed that.
No, the fundware system just got the budget loaded a couple weeks ago, so I have not been able to generate those reports until now.
All right, thank you. So the discussion's already happened, and action's already been taken, and I just haven't seen it yet, so, perfect. Thank you. That was great.
Ms. Peder.
I would just like to, I know we were going to add this, and we talked about it at finance this week, but that when I came on as a new school committee member, I made an appointment with the superintendent for business to sit down and go through the warrant and how to go through it and what it meant, and, you know, how to check, like, the numbers, and if you had a question, what to do. And I thought that was very helpful for, and I think Mr. Pavlicek readily recommended that people do that with him if they have questions, and he gets it down with any member that either is new or needs refreshing, especially with the new, the new rule there. But that would be a way to get a little more information on your, on your time to, to get a refresher course on warrant signing and checking.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Pavlicek. Onto the finance subcommittee report.
First item is fiscal '16 budget reductions, and Finance Committee thought it would be a good idea to just confirm the status of the reductions that were made. You have a document here called Cut List Restoration Priorities. So let me just talk about what the vote actually will be and what information we have here. So the information we have here is that the items below the line, I understand from the administration, are the cuts that were actually implemented to balance the fiscal '16 budget. Now, you note that there is one item in red, high school world language, 1.0 FTE, which has a strike-through, and then four-tent math, four-tent English, and two-tent PE to total 1.0 FTE. The reason that's in red is because we're asking you to retroactively approve the four-tent math, four-tent English, two-tent PE reduction, and, and to vote that this evening. So I will move that we approve that cut. I did politely remind the superintendent that since we go through a rigorous process where she leaves, where we talk about not only the priorities, but the cuts necessary to balance the budget, we brief the PTOs, and then as you'll note at the bottom of the page, in March, we vote the final cuts, that if subsequent to that, the administration has a better idea or a different idea than the school, than what the school committee voted, that they need to come back to the school committee and ask for approval prior to implementation of the cut, not subsequent to the implementation of the cut. But as is usually the case, I think superintendent usually has good ideas, and we usually think they're good ideas, so this was one where there was quite a bit of discussion about the high school world language cut. It had some AP implications which were not pleasant, and so, without the benefit of the lengthy discussion, this appears to be a better idea. But in any case, this is the cut that was implemented, so we're asking you to retroactively approve it. What, what this is not, therefore, is a listing of what the restoration priorities are, and this will be important as we talk about next year's budget, and which of these, if any, we might wish to restore. So just because it's at the top of the list does not mean it is the number-one restoration priority. Quite the contrary, we haven't discussed it at all.
All right, second.
Thank you. That was a motion.
Motion's been made in the second. Ms. Verella. Dr. Don.
You were first, then.
A brief comment, I appreciate the clarity that this amended list provides, and I would like to point out that I think it is a probably more disruptive to individual teachers as constructed here, but I think as a whole, the effect on our programs is, is less, and I think that this is a good exchange from that perspective, and my acknowledgement to those members on the, on the teaching staff who are negatively affected by that change. to those members on the teaching staff who are negatively affected by that change.
Ms. Reale.
So, I'm not totally clear. So, the High School World Language and the High School .4 math, .4 English, and .2 PE, is that for this year to automatically or for next year?
This year. Fiscal sixteen.
Okay. So, we have the money to figure out how to replace the .4, the .4, and the .?
No. So, here's the sequence of events.
They were cut for the beginning of this year.
I'm not confused.
Stay with me. So, the sequence of events was, we decided that these cuts below the line, including the 1.0 World Language, were necessary to balance the budget.
Right. I'm following that.
Okay.
Right.
Then, in June, I think, the administration decided that this cut was a better cut, implemented that cut, so that.
Which cut?
.4, .4, .2.
.4, .4, .2.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, that on July 1, or soon thereafter, the budget.
The Royal Language teacher?
No.
Yes.
Kept the Royal Language teacher, and as Dr. Donahue has pointed out, took various amounts.
Hit of that .4, the .4 and the .2.
Each of three FTEs.
Okay. All right. I explained it. Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Pavlicek.
One of the things that precipitated this was, at the end of the year, our High School Mathematics Department had took a job at another community. Our Middle School Mathematics Department had moved out of state, and we had the opportunity to combine the two jobs into a single job, which gave us some savings. And so, it's the equivalent, the .4 equivalent was basically an administrative restructuring that allowed us to get that part of it. And then, we went from there into the other disciplines where we had, for instance, a PE teacher returned from leave, and it gave us some more flexibility in the PE, and we managed to cobble together a 1.0 in a different manner. And basically, it was precipitated by changes in staff that happened very late in the year.
Anything further? Ms. Downs.
The motion is to retroactively approve the High School cuts of four-tenths of a math teacher, four-tenths of an English teacher, and two-tenths of a PE teacher. Seconded by Ms. Padere.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. Thank you for explaining that. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
Can I just make one more comment, though, for the record?
Sure.
I just want to say that with that done, yet again, for the cuts, the middle school was the most decimated last year. When you look at the elementaries, the high schools, and the structure changes that were made, just for the record, throwing it out there.
November 4th.
Yep.
Full discussion.
Yep.
Your opportunity.
I'll be there.
Okay. Vendor warrant, Dr. Pavlicek, number and date and amount?
Number seventeen, dated tomorrow, October 22nd, and the amount is $953,430.47.
Move approval of vendor warrant number seventeen dated 10/22/15 in the amount of $953,430.47.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. 501, Mr. Walker abstaining.
So, at our last Subcommittee meeting, we took up several policies, one of which was the diversity policy, Policy IFC. We discussed the policy in Subcommittee, and after going through the policy and discussing potential changes and our process for evaluating the policy itself, which, if I may for just a moment, our process for evaluating changes to our policies, we are informed by several different sources, one of which is legal counsel, one of which is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, I believe it is, and then, one of the other sources is a collaborative that has a number of different districts' policies where we can access them and compare them to our own. And in going through that process, we were unable to find a similar diversity policy at any of the other districts in that collaborative. We think that we are the only policy, the only district in that collaborative that has a diversity policy. So, with those avenues of exploration explored, the Subcommittee decided that the diversity policy as it stands, as it is before you, was sufficient, did not require amending. So, we submitted to you tonight for reapproval. If anybody has constructive comments or changes they would like to see, we are certainly open to incorporating those and implementing those at our next Subcommittee meeting. But if not, then I would move reapproval of our diversity policy, Policy IFC.
I'll second for the purposes of discussion.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
So, Dr. Donahue, this is unchanged or?
Correct. This is unchanged.
Kevin, if I may, I'm trying to remember. Did we do a first read of this at the last meeting?
No, we did not do a first read of this at the last meeting. And as a point of order, I'll ask you to clarify, for reapproval of unchanged policies, I don't know if it requires a first and second reading. My exposure to previous policies that have been reapproved do not indicate such, but I will gladly defer to the chair.
Yeah, I'd have to check.
Yeah.
And I don't want to take everybody's time to check it now. So, my suggestion is that we just do a first read and then go ahead at the next meeting. You could be entirely right. I just don't have that at the top of mind. So, if there's no objection, we'll just treat this as a first read. Treat the next meeting as a second read. Ms. Bagley-Jones.
We're still on this, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I know we talked about this a little bit, and you do have gender in here, but we don't have, we talked about transgendered issues, so I don't know if we need to specify that. I mean, I think if it belongs anywhere, it belongs in our, I mean, that's not what I meant. It belongs in our diversity report. Didn't mean if it belongs anywhere.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
So, that's one of the things I wanted to look at. I'm not sure, I think there's a distinction between a discrimination policy and a diversity policy, and I don't want to confuse the two. So, if this is a first reading, I think we'll all have time to think about those things and come back with thoughtful comments, hopefully.
And perhaps provide comments to the Policy Subcommittee before their next meeting, so they can consider. Dr. Donahue.
Please, and they are quite welcome. I would point out, in reading through the policy, the policy references both Massachusetts laws and federal statutes. And although I'm not a lawyer, I believe there may be some divergence there with regard to gender identity, at least in terms of promulgated statutes, maybe not with regard to executive orders and such. So, that may be something that we would look at incorporating, but it may add a, or it may not add a degree of complexity to the policy.
Anything further? So, I guess what we should do is get our comments, to the extent we have them before the next meeting, to Dr. Donahue for consideration by this Policy Subcommittee, and then we'll put it on the agenda for a second read on the 4th.
Excellent.
Okay. Facility Subcommittee Report.
We've met twice, and the two major agenda items, other than the capital plan, which was reviewed by the Facility Subcommittee before we submitted it, have been space, space needs study, and a comprehensive facilities management plan. There were some good ideas or good suggestions regarding space actions that we should take, preliminary to commissioning a full-blown space needs study, and that I passed on to the superintendent, which were that we should look at the possibility of possibly taking advantage of the Cunningham Attic, which is currently unused but has considerable amount of space. There are some facilities issues there, but whether possibly that could be of some use. The other idea was to perhaps talk with Curry College and Milton Academy regarding some potential of an in-kind donation of space. Perhaps for use for the burgeoning preschool programs. So, I asked the superintendent to think about those things. If we think they're viable ideas, obviously, we'll come to the school committee with some recommendations. But the Facility Subcommittee thought that, at the very least, we should look into those things before we commission a full space needs study. On the facilities management plan, we've been working hard on ensuring that we are all clear and have some consensus on what the content of a facilities management plan should be. There made some good progress last meeting. I promised them quarterly meetings, but we've been meeting monthly. We probably, not probably, we'll meet again in November, and I think at that point, we will have nailed down what we think the key components of a facilities management plan are. We may be asking for the school committee's approval to engage outside resources, but I'll try to have that, some estimate of what that might cost nailed down, so that we can include that in the discussion of next year's budget and perhaps one-time money request. So, I think we're making good progress. It's a good group, and more shortly.
Sorry. Quick question. So, do we have a sense of what the numbers are going forward with how overcrowded we're going to be?
Yeah. That's the thing, that other than this preschool kindergarten bubble, there does not appear to be an overall bubble in enrollment. So, this does not seem to be an instance where we might need to think about building another school or looking, building out, but we do have to solve that problem.
Okay. Thank you.
But the superintendent confirmed that.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Transportation and Traffic Safety Subcommittee.
Yep. So, we had a recent meeting, actually, earlier in the week, and we touched base on several things. The first, this was a query that came up to me about school signage, in the sense of when you're approaching a school, there should be school signage, school ahead, that kind of a thing, for the commuters, and that the Pierce doesn't have anything on many of the avenues coming in. So, I reached out to Milton Public Police Department about that. They came back to me and said, "It's actually a potential DPW issue." So, actually, Dr. Pavlicek is taking that on as one of his action items, that he's going to reach out to Bill Ritchie and Joe Lynch and figure out, you know, what our next action step should be on that. That's something that we're looking to try to put in place, especially because there's so many walkers and bikers, which is a good thing to Pierce now, but especially for drivers, and that's such a busy intersection, that there's no notification that there's a school ahead and coming up all the different avenues there. So, that's one step that we're taking. We had a very, very successful walk-to-school day on the 7th. Many of the reps from each of the elementary schools said it was one of their most successful events ever. The numbers were high on all four schools. And we are going to have another, you know, all-town walk-to-school day on November 18th before, hopefully, it gets knock wood, too cold. But there were other reports that, especially even from the Colacott-Cunningham area, that they tend to try to do it weekly now, at least once a week, and have walking school buses coming through, you know, East Milton Square and going up. So, that was a good thing. There are a couple of bus issues that came up that we addressed. One is some of the, just some of the bus issues of traffic through the East Milton, some of the East Milton Square stops, but Glenn has been reaching out to the Milton Public, I mean, the Milton Police Department for answers on those. Also, there were a couple of concerns about high school buses potentially maybe leaving a little early for some of the kids, you know, not to be able to make it. And there were some complaints that, you know, three minutes after, vroom, it's gone, and, you know, and kids are walking down to Pierce to pick them up. But again, those are all being investigated and addressed and looked at. And then, Jake Smith, who's Director of Transportation, is still nailing down dates with the four elementaries in Pierce with regards to the safety seminars that they're planning on having. Pierce is mostly going to be like a bike safety seminar about, you know, and then the four elementaries are going to be a walking seminar. All the principals have given him dates that just absolutely won't work. Now, they're just fine-tuning dates that potentially will work. So, we're going to try to do that before the holidays, and we have another meeting coming up on November 19th. So, stuff moving forward and happening.
Great. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Very helpful. So, has anything come up on your committee about the plane?
Oh, yeah. No, that's, that's.
We've gotten some emails about it.
Yeah, that's, Chairman Zulus is taking that under, it's a whole other entity in and of itself, because it is transportation in the sky, but it's not something that I'm going to be responsible of how Milton students get from one place to another.
It's likely that that will be on the agenda in a coming meeting.
Okay.
Old Business, Citizen Speak topic response? I don't think we have anything. Next meeting, agenda items. Have anything?
I think we'll have health and wellness by then. I'm looking at Janet because we have disseminated, we may have health and wellness.
Okay. All right. Mr. Walker.
Ms. Reale.
Just as follow-up to that, I wouldn't mind reporting on, just because Ms. Bagley-Jones mentioned the health and wellness, but I would like to do a report, I know with Superintendent Gormly not being there, but just a summary of the health night that we had at the Pierce Middle School. It was sponsored by the Pierce PTO but open to the entire community. And it was really, really well-attended and very successful with our speaker, Dr. Tara Cousineau, who's a Milton parent, and then also both the health teachers presenting curriculum, which was, it was really good, and maybe I'll chit-chat with you about it.
We can have the superintendent.
Yeah, and give a summary of it, just as a budding, because it had to deal with risky behavior and choices and things, so, just an FYI.
Okay. Mr. Walker.
I think we have the superintendent's evaluation coming up. Is that the next meeting or the meeting?
I think what we're going to do, it was intended to be the next meeting, but Ms. Padere is going to be at the conference at the next meeting, so I think we're going to go for the meeting after that. And the process will be, we'll introduce it, especially to the new members, at the next meeting. I will solicit feedback and prepare an evaluation and get that out prior to the 23rd, which will be our next meeting after that, and we'll take it up for a vote on the 23rd. So, that's the current plan.
Great. That's perfect. So, could I suggest that the superintendent provide us with another update, could be in whatever form you and she decide, but an update on where we are on the specific Since obviously that should be what we're using to make our judgments.
And Dr. Donahue, did you have something?
Policy, we'll have one or more topics to discuss.
Okay. Policy. Citizen Speak? We don't have anything, I don't believe. So, we will now, I will move to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session, for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with MEA, discussion of which, the discussion of which in open session could have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee and also the approval of minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, it'll roll call vote, Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Zulis, yes, Ms. Padere.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Dr. Donahue.
Yes.
We are adjourned, thank you all, we will see you on November 4th.